Katie?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Did everybody get their copy of the general plan?
Yes.
Great. So, we just presented the last two months to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm pleased to announce that they unanimously approved the general plan. And so, as you can see our upcoming schedule, we have three meetings upcoming with you, but I promise we're not just going to go through the same canned presentation every night. Tonight, I really want to focus on some of the information, I think, that's pertinent to council, how it relates to other plans, kind of walk through the document. That 95 percent of that cost went to public outreach. That's really where we focused, is getting the public involved. So, that might be anything from our notices, to the public meetings themselves, the costs associated with running the general plan committee, ads, all those different things that we did. So, the vast majority of that money we spent was reaching out to the public. We're estimating this year, we had a budget supplemental for $52,000, so that's going to be our ratification, the required publicity pamphlet that we have to do. And so, we're estimating the total cost will end up being $128,000. We've also been tracking staff hours, and we estimate that about 4,000 staff hours went into the project. And what's interesting is that we project that about 2,800 of those hours, or 70 percent, would have been necessary even if we had hired a consultant, because, again, so much of the time and effort was spent in public outreach, we would have been at those meetings and been part of that public outreach whether we had a consultant or not. And just 700 hours alone were spent at public meetings. So, 18 percent of that 4,000 hours was actually face-to-face time with our public. Obviously, that's not 700 hours of meetings, that's, you know, if there's five staff members at a meeting, we added each one of those staff members' times. But, again, we're proud that almost 20 percent of our time was spent meeting with the public about this. And then, I also think it's important to note that the general plan committee put in almost 2,000 hours of volunteer time for this project. And then, between ASU and some volunteer interns we had, they put in another 4,000 hours into this project. So, of course, using them, relying on them really allowed us to keep costs down and keep staff time down. So, just a little quick comparison, in 2003, it cost us about $400,000, and I estimate there still would have been 2,800 staff hours. And this year, it's been $128,000. And it's actually not a fair comparison, because the 128 includes ratification, where the $400,000 doesn't. And 4,000, and then we've had 4,000 staff hours. So, it, I think we made a really good decision in doing the project in-house. Of course, I'm not saying using consultants is wrong. One reason we've been able to do this is because we have the parks master plan, and the transportation master plan, and the economic development strategic plan going on at the same time, which were some of the three most commented items. So, we were really able to rely on the expertise of those consultants and those planning processes to inform the general plan. So, it really worked out, doing all those processes together, even though it was a lot of work. It, I think it really worked out to do all those together concurrently. So, now delving into the general plan a little bit. And one thing I just want to point out, that I don't necessarily have a slide, but we now have, you can see the chapter covers from the art contest, and I just have to say Michael Leone just did a beautiful job. He laid these out, but the artwork just turned out beautiful, I think, and it's really cool to have that as part of the general plan. So, you know, the first chapter is just an introduction to what the general plan is, what the purpose of the document is, how to use the general plan. And then, the second-
Can we make comments?
Oh, absolutely. Jump in, please.
Does anybody have a comment on the chapter one? I just want to point out something, if nobody else has a, has one. Okay. I think, I said this before, let's go just to page six. Everything performance-based. We never really, I think if I look back, ever had a tracking on what the citizens wanted to this degree. And because we have this new program, we, we are going to track everything. And so, when someone says, "Well, you just haven't done this," or "You haven't done that," we actually can go back and trace it and say, "No, this is, this was it was it. This is where it ranked, and this is why it is." So, I just want to commend staff again, on the performance management program. It requires a lot of work from you and everybody, but in the end, it certainly is a great, a great resource that we have. Go ahead. That was my-
No, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And then, moving on to chapter two, this is really the data. And the last general plan, the data was kind of spread out amongst the different chapters, but we decided to pull it all into one chapter, so that, the plan is to keep this updated either every year, or as often as we see is necessary to keep this data updated, so that hopefully 10 years from now, we don't necessarily need to do a full huge update of the general plan. We might just be able to just fix up certain areas rather than a whole comprehensive update. So, it'll just make it a little easier to keep this data up-to-date as a single chapter.
And again, it's interesting to see our public's getting younger. And yet, we have our baby boomers that are getting older, and we're going to have a stress on, well, on senior housing, and so that's going to grow. So, it's interesting to see the dichotomy.
Then, moving on to the vision chapter, and you did get an update after we did, we had done a lot of big public outreach push in late 2012, and brought some of this information to you on a preliminary basis. And since that time, the general plan committee shortened our vision statement. They wanted it to be something really easy to remember, and they brought it down to create a highly desirable and sustainable place for all to live, work, visit, and play. And they'd also come up with these nine fundamental strategies. And if you remember, that was because we kept going to all these public outreach and kept hearing the same thing over and over and over. So, they really wanted a way to highlight these major things and bring them up front in the plan, so it was just, they didn't get lost in the plan. It was just really clear, here's the major focus areas. And what was so interesting about this is when I went back and looked at the strategic plan, it was pretty much the same items. So, it was really great to see the strategic plan and the general plan just naturally lining up. And then, of course, recently, oh, and you can even take the fundamental strategies and assign the focus areas very, very easily, because it's so easy to see that connection. And then, again, it was so great to see the citizen survey come out, and it was the same stuff again. It was, I just want to say, I don't know if you've been following some of the general plan processes in some of the other communities, but this doesn't always happen. And what I'm seeing here is that our residents, our business community, our development community, which we've done a lot of outreach to them, and also the ULI technical assistance panel we've had, and then our city government seem to be all aligning. We're all identifying the same major priorities, and that's a fantastic first step to reaching the vision we want to achieve. And that's not the case in all communities. Sometimes, there's not agreement on what we need to do to get to our vision, and so it's just fantastic to see all these documents lining right up and coming to the same conclusions. And then, oh, sorry. And then, I mentioned that other outreach efforts, and ULI and the economic development Chapter four introduces the community goals to us, and one thing I did want to mention is on the last page, page 44, and also it was a separate attachment. It was requested by council when we were here in October to try and put everything on a one-pager, and so we did attempt that. So, please, of course, let me know if you're looking for any other kind of information to summarize the general plan. It's not always easy to do. And so, those community goals are introduced in chapter four, but then it's the following chapters, five, six, and seven, where we take those goals, really get into detail. We provide an intense statement, because we want to be clear about what it is we're trying to achieve. And also, by providing intense statements, it allows flexibility in how you achieve that goal. So, it gives us a little room to wiggle, and we might find multiple solutions to reach a goal.
Well, I was stunned to see that, I just didn't realize the higher percentage of family, we have higher percentage of families in Goodyear than Maricopa or Arizona. That was, I have to say, that was something I didn't realize, and so that came out in this.
Yeah. Yeah, it was surprising to me, too. Thank you, Mayor. Then, we also just try and be clear, and just list out what are the assets we have working for us to achieve these goals, and what are some of the barriers we're going to come up against.
Well, that's what I wanted to bring up, okay? So, I noticed the, on F, on chapter five, consider requiring developers to retire their agriculture irrigation grandfather rights and obtain credit for the percent of the development that can be served by those water supplies. So, I thought that, that's a very lofty goal, but a good goal, and it's kind of part of our solution, our water solutions for the future. Joe?
Katie, question.
Yes.
I might have missed it, but in here, we have talked about trying to have more opportunities for families here, you know, whether it's restaurants, whether it's entertainment, whether it's, you know, variety of things for them to do, especially since it's come through that, you know, we're high in families. Where does that fit into some of the fundamental strategy? I see place and destinations, I see economic opportunities, I see parks and recreation, but I don't see that really in parks and recreation. See, that's an offshoot of quality-of-life events or available services to our residents. You see what I mean? Where does that fit in the overall strategies? Because that's what I hear all the time out there. Because of the families and because of some of the young demographics, there's places for them to do, things for them to do within the city of Goodyear.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Mayor. You know, and I did the same thing, I kind of looked like, it doesn't say entertainment anywhere in one of the titles of the fundamental strategies, and maybe that is something we should look at. I really see it in strategy number one, and in the text, it does go into that we need to include quality shopping, dining, recreation, and entertainment experiences. So, that's-
So, under places and destination?
Yeah, so the destinations mean those shopping and dining and recreation destinations.
Okay. I just don't want to lose that focus, because that's what I'm hearing out there when I'm talking to individuals, especially with the families and the young kids and places to go. I understand parks is up there, but they want more than just the parks and the trails and that type of stuff, so.
And especially for the young adults.
Yeah, right, for the young adults, yes.
If we're going to keep our young adults-
Here, instead of going somewhere else, yeah.
Something we must have done.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you, thank you. And that is, we did go to the, a couple of the high schools and talk to them, and they gave us some ideas of things we need to do to make life more fun in Goodyear for teens. So, yeah, one, well, and it's interesting you bring that up, because one thing we exercised, we did with the general plan committee at their last meeting, is we took all the objectives through the whole plan, and we figured, you know, we have this general plan committee now that's been working with us for a year and a half. They probably are our most expert citizens at this point, because they've just delved into this and learned so much, and we asked them. So, of all these objectives we have throughout this plan, what do you think are the most important ones that the city should focus on? And we had them vote on that. And there was a tie for fifth, but the top five or six came out. One, we need to attract businesses. Two, we need to expand retail and entertainment, so they couldn't agree with you more. It's, again, showing what you're hearing out there. Expanding our arts and culture, parks and recreation, opportunities for alternative modes of travel, and then working with our neighborhoods. And, again, I don't think this is any surprise to city council, I think this is what you're hearing. It's just, again, it's another group that it's-
It's reassuring.
It's reassuring. It's great to hear that, again, that after all that work they did, they came to the same conclusions, that these are our focus areas. This is what we need to prioritize.
And we really are doing this now.
A lot of those-
A lot of this, we're already doing it, and it's wonderful that they are validating what we are doing.
Yes.
And have been doing. So, I'm happy about that.
Absolutely. So, then, one of the biggest parts of the general plan is the land use and transportation plan, and I'll try and go through this quickly, because I think we did go through some of this before. But, in the 2003 plan, we have a general plan that started to look very similar to our zoning ordinance, and it got very, very detailed, parcel-specific, and that's not the purpose of a general plan. A general plan is supposed to be more flexible, more, for lack of a better word, more general. And we had 18 land use categories, and it was hard, too, because there was even some areas where it wasn't specific, and this is an example. I know there's not road names on here, but this is Serval and Yuma where the Frye Center is, and right catty corner, it shows is residential, but it's actually a commercial piece. You know, so, so there were some areas that were detailed and some areas that weren't detailed, so we knew we needed to improve the general plan. And we looked at what trends were nationally, and came up with this more generalized general plan. And we worked a lot with the development community, and obviously, the general plan committee as we developed this. And I think we have created something that is going to provide flexibility to the development community, but it's also clear about what kind of quality development we expect in the city. So, it's kind of a handoff, you know? We're going to be clear about, you know, we want quality development, we want a certain type of the development in this community, but we'll give you a little bit more flexibility about where exactly that corner coffee shop is, as long as it's designed correctly. So, just to give a zoom in, this is the area north of I-10, so you can see how we've gone from the detailed, where it showed in Pebble Creek, the golf courses, and all the little pieces, where now it's just showing neighborhoods. And that neighborhoods is the largest area, and of course, the idea is, if we want our neighborhoods to be walkable and transit-oriented, and real communities, they should be integrated. There should be coffee shops and parks and all these types of uses, integrated with all sorts of types of housing. And then, we also just, you know, one of the biggest concerns was that, how do we make sure citizens know what's going on? You know, if we lose this detail, we want to make sure citizens know the plan. And because we have so many large master plan communities, you know, we still, someone going to the Palm Valley or Pebble Creek area, we can share some of these master plans with them, and the planning staff has a lot of this information. So, we're, you know, as we update the city's website, we're looking for ways to get some of this information on there, make it easy for residents to do research when they're looking at a new community, or just trying to find out what's going on in a community they've lived in for a long time.
You have to go back to one thing you said about, you know, having amenities in the neighborhoods, because we just had a situation come up where we put those rentals in a place that they wanted to have a coffee house. I guess that, it sort of bothered me just a little bit, in the sense that sometimes, no matter what we want, we can't get it. So, so then, to progress, you move on, and to infill, you move on. So, I don't, I don't know how we designate that, and that it actually comes true, because in many areas, we've done that, and it didn't come true, and we had to make a change in it.
Even fire stations.
Even, you name it. So, that, that's a, that's a ticklish one, I think, to try to meet, but it's just, I think that's probably in the area where you put challenge, or how you, how do you put it at the end of each chapter, which I really loved, action items. You know, that could be like an action item, to work on that, to find out, you know, what's it, how can we make that work, you know? But we have to be realistic, too, and practical, but it isn't always so. So, that's up to you, however, but I think more than suggesting.
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, that was a great example case of how it could work with this new general plan, and, you know, it went through the zoning process, and the zoning process is when we invite the public, and it really shows that even if the general plan allows a use, you still have to go through that zoning process, which is the, a time that the public comes and reviews. So, that still happens with a generalized general plan or a specific one.
And to go back just quickly, because as I had only one more comment I've talked about tonight, on chapter seven, on action B, consider, it was another action, consider creation of districts where architectural and design standards would be unique depending on the surrounding uses and goals, a vision of the general plan. That is something we've talked about here at the DIAS, that we think is extremely important. So, it's under an action, and we understand how difficult sometimes it is to make that action come to fruition, but I, I just want to put a couple, I want to put triple stars on that one, that that's an area that I really think we need to be really looking into. So, I don't know how that goes under the, how we-
Maybe, Mayor, there can be an area for a developer that's going to come in and build something, and he uses some really fabulous artwork out front that really distinguishes that area, and then as new businesses come in around him, they do the same thing, and it could be, you know?
Well, I'm thinking ballpark. You know, ballpark, we have an area that definitely could be different, and I just think those areas-
Well, yeah.
Lots of room there. The residential could be different in there, and that's all I'm, that's all I'm bringing for, so.
Absolutely. It's a good idea.
I think it's real important that we articulated it.
Yeah.
If you never articulate it, it doesn't happen.
That's true.
But as other people review it, it gives them food for thought as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. It's good to know that that's an important action item for city council. I appreciate that. And then, also, I have more slides on this for next week, but the land use plan does get into lots of pictures to show, these are the kind of developments we want to see, to just, you know, be clear. That's one thing I heard from someone in the development community. They said that Goodyear is a very quality community, and we're in a position to demand excellence. The only thing we have to do is be very clear up front what we want to see, and then reward people through the development process who bring that to us. And so, the first step in that is trying to make the general plan very clear of the type of development we hope to see in the city.
And are you satisfied with the pictures you have that, that will challenge that? Will it let them know?
I think a better question is, are you satisfied with the pictures? Is this what you're hoping to say?
Tell me where we are now. Are we on eight?
Yes, chapter eight.
Okay. Well, but what I've noticed, you, you show what we have. That's kind of the pictures. Is that what I'm assuming we're looking at?
Some of them are what we have, but then there's some pictures on page 121 that, you know, is an example of a development in Phoenix that doesn't have subdivision perimeter walls.
121, yeah, I, I think the land use, the way it's located in here, but I don't think it really shows the, any different architecture or any suggestive things of, of other areas that we've taken picture. I know at City Center, we took a lot of pictures of different places on the City Center Committee. And some of them were modern, you know, some of them were, but I don't see that in here. I see us staying close to the same standards in the pictures. Sherri?
And what I've noticed also is kind of in line with that, I see a lot of aerials, but I think we need to, if we can, bring it in closer, so like what the mayor's saying, you can see like, you know, the front, kind of like a Google street view, so you can see what is different about them, because from the aerial, I can't tell that looks like any neighborhood. You know, I like the aerials to kind of give you the idea where the land use is, and then maybe if we're talking about the architectural, maybe a little, you know, bring it in so we can see some of the differences.
Thank you. We can absolutely.
If I may, Mayor and council members, one of the things that we're going through is a design guideline update that really starts to get some of those architectural treatments and what we're looking for in terms of some of those flexibilities. So, the question is, is, is that a standalone document, or can part of that be integrated with this? And I'm not sure if that's too late or not, but, but that's, that's where the primary focus was through the design guidelines. Now, where does this stay in the general plan? Because that, this has to be consistent with the design guidelines, so, understood.
Thank you. To build off-
Can we have, we have a picture of pages, our future, future thought, name something of it, give it a name, so it's, it's part of, is people are going through and looking at this? Or are we just going to say, well, if you, you know, you have to look at the architectural design, but in order to get the idea of our forward thinking? Are we allowed anything like that in the general plan? Just-
Thank you, Mayor. We can certain, I mean, we're allowed to include that.
This has to be a group, the group decision. I'm just throwing that out. I don't want to-
One, one thought, if I may, while we are putting this together, and, you know, Brian was touching on it, is because it's not always just about the architecture, but also the design of the site, and that's some of what we've maybe been missing or could improve upon, is, you know, we, we do have areas where there's beautiful homes, but maybe they're not walkable. There's a coffee shop on the corner, but it takes you a mile to get there, even though it's right next door. Or, we have commercial centers that maybe don't have that plaza gathering space, so that they could have a little event or something. And so, it's so hard, because so, so many times when they come to Development Services with plans, they've already got the site plan laid out, they've already got the flats conceptually laid out, and it's almost too late, because they've already gone down this path. So, we definitely wanted to focus on kind of site planning and site layout in the general plan, so that the very first document they look at, they're seeing, okay, Goodyear wants to look at those types of things, too. When we get to the design guidelines, it's like, it's not too late to change architecture. We still have lots of time to work on the detail.
Makes sense what your goal is.
And Mayor, if I could add to that as well, design, this is a ten-year document, and design guidelines can be more flexible. You change those on, on a more regular basis, certainly gives you that opportunity as standards change more quickly, as market conditions change. So, if that's consistent with the direction of council.
Well, I'm looking forward for the Parks Master Plan to come, because before I was ever on council, I went to every public meeting and begged this coun, not this council, our council, to please put in amphitheaters in our parks, so that we would have a place to perform and to do plays, and it fell on deaf ears. You know, when you're building parks, and they're just grass, like what they have in Sun City, they have the grass amphitheaters, and then they have the half-bell shell and stuff like that. So, hopefully, if it's identified, people long after we're gone will remember that and perhaps think of it. And I think that's what you're doing here in the general plan, is to give some ideas of what could happen if you think out of the box, or if you're a little bit more forward-thinking, like this wonderful building we're going to have soon, that's all metal. I can't wait to see it.
Cookson?
The Cookson Door. I just know it's just going to be, it's going to knock our socks off, and-
Maybe yours it will.
No, I just think it's going to be beautiful, and it's something innovative, it's something different. It's different in Goodyear. We don't have to all be the same, so I'm excited. You know, I think it's, I think it's wonderful.
Right, thank you for-
Thanks, Katie.
-celebrating on that.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And then, moving on, I don't have a slide for it, but chapter nine is really just details of how we amend the plan. So, it's, it's pretty much the same for the land use plan as it is in the 2003 plan, that you can kind of change up to 20 acres without triggering an amendment. And then, we also have some information there on how you can make changes to the text. So, that, once again, we want to make sure we can keep this updated. There is, the city of Peoria really talked about that, that the last 10 years, they, every year, kind of updated the plan and kept it up-to-date, and then they didn't have to do a lot of outreach. They had a pretty simple process to update the plan this time.
Do you have to adopt something like that? Or is that going to automatic?
You still have to adopt it and go through ratification. It's just maybe not a year and a half, 4,000 staff hours.
So, I'm assuming you're going to come before us and present that to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, amendments, yes, amendments have to be approved by city council.
No, no, I'm, I'm talking about that you want to update it throughout the year and add to it. I know sometimes we've done that, but maybe not to the extent that Peoria is talking about.
So, can I ask a question about the amendment?
Yes.
I, I see where on chapter nine, you say what has to occur for an action to happen. Is there a law, or do we have a city ordinance that tells what's the next step, how to do it?
Thank you. State statute tells us what the process is for a minor versus a major amendment.
And so, that's set already, and we don't change that every year?
It's set, we can add to it, so our zoning ordinance or the-
Okay.
Or the general plan can add to it, but there's certain requirements, such as a major amendments can only be heard by city council one time per year. So, we have to take them all, and they go through the process once a year.
Well, for heaven's sakes, that they really closed, isn't that just so convenient for them to close and make that rule? That's another one of those, let's tighten up on them and-
And it's another reason why we wanted to go to a more flexible general plan.
Keep them in line, huh?
Yeah.
No. Excuse me. Sorry for being critical, but that certainly cuts creativity.
Well, it does, yeah, because what if we have six developers that want to come and do six different things, and they all have to wait and do it all, come before us and work it in?
Yeah, and back in 2006, that was, we would have six major general plan amendments.
I know they must have had a reason for it, I'm sorry, but sometimes I, I guess, maybe they should have put the reason down so others know.
Well, but they ought to let us do it, it's, and we're the ones that have to approve it, it's not them.
Yeah. I think what they're trying to get at is that if you're making big changes to the general plan, then they're going to start affecting each other, so you want to look at them all look at them all together at one time because, but that's all we can.
Well, that sounds like a good reason.
I can see the symphony. I can see the symphony. All right. Give it to us, Brian.
Oh, Mayor, Council, it's actually been set that way for a number of years, so.
Yeah.
Even in the 2003 general plan, that was a requirement is for major amendments. We had one shot at it, once per year, so it's been state statute for a number of years for that. And I think, just to jump on, add to what Katie was saying, biggest thing, because of public votes on this, it doesn't give unbridled control to the council to make major changes to the plan anytime. It's just really once per year, so the public can focus on that one time a year when you're considering those major changes.
Okay. We'll be quiet. Go ahead.
Okay, Mayor, I'll be quiet.
So then finally, moving on to Chapter.
If I may, the other thing, it's very important.
It really got to you, didn't it? You said we'd be quiet.
No, but, you know, one of the things, and it's very important, and I want to refer us back to Chapter Nine, page 120, standard number 32. That is a change and it's what the General Plan Committee has come up with and through the, all the public meetings. But it's a change in how we look at subdivisions. And Katie alluded to it as now, and she referenced the photo that was actually on page 121, that doesn't have walls around subdivisions. So you can get to that corner coffee shop without having to go all the way down the street now through the entrance and then back to it. But it's a change with how we start to look at how these subdivision plots come through here, so it will be a change and we'll be working closely with the development committee, but wanted to, what I would like is just, you know, the sense of council on that because it is very different from what we've done in the past.
Well, I still like the gated community.
This would not preclude gated communities in this, you know, like a Pebble Creek community, for example.
In Cantomea and, you know.
Some of those, you would still have access to those, but there may be points within there that the residents can go out through a gate or something, a walk gate or something.
Or a surrounding area going around it, continuous path. Sherri?
Thanks. And on page 123, there's an example of a community that did, and I'm not sure if it was gated or not, but it did use walls and then they showed how they did a trail connection to a neighboring commercial center. And standard 33 does talk about gated communities, just to be clear that we're not disallowing gated communities.
Oh, good.
Well, yeah, because I think one, was it Cave Creek or Carefree that doesn't even allow gated communities? So I like that people, if they want that option, we have that option. But up in Estrella, a lot of our communities don't really have walls unless they're actually where the houses are, because you can walk through the areas, through the little washes and over to the next little area, to the playground over there and, you know, you don't notice that the walls are gone, really. Because where there's houses, there's still walls or view fencing, but you don't really notice, but there is that really good access, you just have to watch out for snakes and coyotes.
It could have been in some of the other communities that we could have done some kind of right of way behind a home site, you know, and had a path that was free and they could have the walls. So there were opportunities and there may be opportunities in the future. Am I, have I got that one? All right.
Yeah, and there are gated communities that have gates where, you know, there's a resident key or something like that.
Yeah, we have a precast that.
Yeah, so you can still, residents can still walk to that corner coffee shop and, you know.
What page is that on, Katie?
123.
123, thank you, sweetie.
Standard 33 has the language.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
All right, then, I'll go move on to Chapter 10, implementation. And obviously, that's a very important part of the plan is how we're going to make sure it's implemented. And, you know, there's kind of two parts to the general plan and the first part, you know, what we've just been discussing, the look of the community, it's really implemented through our development review process and this is a very, very high overview of our development review process. But as, I know you know, that when a new development comes in, we look and see if the zoning is okay and if it's not, then we take a step back to the general plan and they have to start there and move forward. But we use the general plan policies to inform zoning ordinance updates or the design guideline updates, as Brian mentioned. And so that part of the general plan will be implemented through the development review process. But then, of course, going back to that performance management, all the great policies and other action items we have in the plan will get funneled through our performance management program. And of course, too, so much of, you know, so much of what's talked about in parks is reflected in the Parks Master Plan and the same with transportation. So the master plans really take a lot of what's already in the general plan and just take it a step further and provide that, you know, what's the funding going to be, what's the timing on this? And then, you know, we use the CIP, we look for grants, partnerships to implement these items. And the implementation chapter talks a lot about that. So that actually concludes my presentation. As I said before, you know, you have the general plan now, so you can, next week is the public hearing, so we'll be hearing from the public if they have any comments or suggestions for changes to the plan and we would love to hear from you if you have more suggestions. And like I said, we built that time in so we could take the time to update the plan based on public input and council's input and bring it back to you for adoption on June 23rd. Vice Mayor?
Question, Katie. Council does, takes action June 23rd and then there's a ratification November 4th. What is our strategy, what is the plan from the 23rd to the 4th to get the message out? The steps have been taken out to the public as far as the efforts have been taken to get to this point? So we in success as opposed to some of our other fellow cities that have not quite gotten that path?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, I appreciate the question. I am scheduled to sit down, well, I don't have it scheduled yet, but I am going to sit down with our communications team. We've sat down before, but to go over that again. But our initial plans, one, we are going to rely on our general plan committee. Our Chair, Chuck Watson, has been fantastic and he also agreed to keep the momentum going and so we're going to be in contact with him. At the last general plan committee meeting, we gave all the general plan committee members a meeting in a bag that had all sorts of information, flyers they can hand out at their HOA meetings, you know, our little magnets about the information and we'll be getting them more information like that. Of course, we have to be careful because the city can't promote, you know, approval of the ratification. We can only just provide information that it's happening and what it's about. And so, but we're, you know, the general plan committee was just so fantastic and they really took it as their charge to keep the momentum going and they're really going to take responsibility to get information about this plan out to our HOAs, Rotary Clubs, their churches, all those different types of organizations. And then, of course, the city will be having a push too. We're going to go to city events, have our booths, get information out about the plan so everyone knows what's going on. And we have the required publicity pamphlet that'll get mailed to all registered voters that'll have a lot of information. We're doing an expanded in focus, the October in focus, we'll focus on the general plan so right before the elections, we can get a lot of information out that way. And of course, we'll use the website and do press releases and hope to get the press involved in this to get information out. But we're always looking for ideas to increase communication and we can absolutely get you more deep, when we put a more formal plan together.
Yeah, I just think it's important to get our story out, you know, a lot of times people don't take the time and have seen all the, was it, was it 25 people? How many were on the committee, 25? From throughout the city that all participated is, the efforts, the times, the input they received out there in the public. I think that's critical to get the story so when people realize what's before them, well, they layer it up, but what's before them was a lot of effort, a lot of hours, a lot of people in the community, all over the community being represented, that that story gets out. And I think that helps in anything when you come into the general plan. I think the others that weren't successful, to be honest with you, probably didn't take the time to do that. So, yeah, I'd be curious to see the overall plan when that comes up, but I think that's really critical is to let people know, you know, the efforts that's been involved in this.
Well, and the importance of voting.
Well, yes, too, but.
Why, why we take it out to them and what the results is if it doesn't get voted through.
But it's just like that one article, I mean, if you get an article on our budget or whatever in some of the issues that are going to be covered, and my understanding is in the in-focus, that's been several, five, six, seven, many meetings to get to that point, not just one event. And I think if people realize how many individuals, how many different neighborhoods spent time on this and the hours that they gave up of their time to do this and how that all turned out, I think that is real important.
Thank you, I think that's. Sherri?
First of all, I want to say thank you. You did an absolutely wonderful job. Just every time I flip it open, I look at it this weekend, I just flip it over, open now again, I see something new. It's easy to read, it's easy to follow. This with the parks and the transportation plan are just phenomenal, so thank you, everybody and staff that worked with you, it was just absolutely wonderful job. My question is, when we send this out, how do we phrase it that there's also a separate transportation and parks plans? Because those don't have to be voted on, right?
That's correct.
So do we just say there's kind of like supplements or how do we do that?
Well, we want to be clear that they're not part of the general plan, so they're not getting voted on and then, you know, all the amendment criteria that comes with the general plan goes on the transportation plan. But that's a great point that we need to talk about, how we get that information out to the residents. And we're talking about that with Brian even earlier today, how we take all these different plans that we've been working on and bring them together to implement them, so I think that's part of the conversation.
Because the parks plan is mentioned in here and then, but then when you actually go, you're like, wow, there's a lot more great stuff in the parks plan so that they know that we didn't forget about all that great information, it's just referred to somewhere else.
Thank you. I think I'm going to need to think about that. I think that's a great point and we'll have to work on that more. Carolyn?
Oh, I'm going to ask a kind of sacrilegious question, I think, and that is the idea of having transportation and parks and, there's a third one and I'm forgetting the third one, the three plans that go into the general plan.
Focus on success economic development?
No. But my point being, I think it's really credible to do it at the same time because it does help to know that they're in step with each other. And was that by accident or by plan? That it happened this year where it doesn't always happen?
You think it's brilliant?
It was absolutely by plan.
Yeah, it was the mayor's plan.
But started off, we needed to have three plans done and then we stepped back, said it only makes sense to integrate. And actually, what happened with the general plan committee, they had subcommittees that actually were participating, so there was just a lot of overlap and integration between the conversations. So I would tell you, yes, it was by plan.
Well, and I would, I think it was an excellent plan, although it does cause the complication that we just mentioned. But the idea that we are, all of things are meshing and marching forward together with their, with their implementation steps is really, really a valid and exciting opportunity, I think. So if it was, my question was accident or design? If it's by design, let's keep it up. If it was an accident, let's make it clear that it was a good one?
It was by design.
Well, good design, Mayor, our manager, sorry.
We need a lot of publicity on it. We need to let the public know in many venues and over and over and over again because.
Wally?
Well, I want to thank you, Katie, and the committee, y'all have been just wonderful. But I also want to toot our horn as the committee that selected the general plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome because we made sure every neighborhood in this city was represented and we were so blessed that our residents are wonderful volunteer people who want to be in the know and they want to be a part of, of working with our city to say what they want to say and what we are going to look like and what we're going to do. And I know I've been talking to some of our plan members that live around my community and when we talk about the general plan, we have been saying that our same committee members were part of the Parks Master Plan, they were part of the transportation plan. So they've all been talking about this and nothing is really new, but the only thing that we're really going to be voting on as a city is the general plan. The council will take action on the Parks Master Plan and on the transportation plan, but we're all talking about it, but I think we're getting the message out to at least some of the groups I've been talking to that they understand they're only going to be voting on the general plan. And they're so pleased to know that all their friends and neighbors were on the committee and they all, I have not found one person that said I haven't been heard. And I think that's really important in all the neighborhoods I've been to. They don't necessarily know what's in the plan, but they feel that they have been heard and that they're, they're being listened to and I, I'm excited about that.
Thank you for that comment. It's good to know.
You're welcome. You're very welcome.
Bill?
Wally, I couldn't agree more and, you know, the irony was that was probably one of Gary Gelsner's last real official.
Great, great job.
So that was great. Katie, you know, I made comments tonight, the final wrap-up night, but, you know, again to you and, and the rest of the committee, but they were shepherded and we, you know, we want to give credit to the citizens that did a lot of the heavy lifting, but they don't know what they're doing unless they're supported by, by staff. So, you know, great, great job on, on getting them to where they needed to go, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And don't forget, there's a, there is at the beginning, a whole page of city staff that worked on this.
We want to thank everybody.
And obviously, the transportation and parks plan and all those plans, everyone who worked on this.
I think the people that have been on that committee are aware of that. I mean, they, every time somebody volunteers on a committee here, they're always stunned at the information sources they're given and how well they, they can make decisions, not easily, but better because they have all this information and staff is with them and the information's confirmed and so you're absolutely right. And we, as a mayor, and you heard the council, I thank you very much. I think you and your committee have done a great job and your chairman has been outstanding. So I, I see that their names will be in this and their picture, so that's important that, that people know for a generation, the next 10 years, who did that, so.
Agreed.
Anything else? Okay, Katie? Okay, then let's go on. The next meeting will be a work session and a regular meeting on June 9th at 5:00. So before we go away, I'm going to go back to council and any comments you want to leave tonight? Any comments from council, anything?
I can't even remember what I did.
Okay, I can, good. I don't think any, I think we're all ready.
We're done.
We're done. City Manager?